So Betsy, who's our new CEO, welcome.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. This is a really exciting topic. Maybe I'm a nerd, but I like it a lot. So hopefully you're all fellow nerds with me. And thank you to Leslie for hosting and being so knowledgeable on all of this stuff. Just before we got kicked off, I did want to remind everyone of the CCI AOR antitrust policy. We are a bunch of competitors getting together in a room, so it's important to be mindful of any of that. And I will put a link to our policy in the chat. But if anyone does have any questions, I'll be on for direct messaging. And we'll also be monitoring the chat and letting Leslie know about questions that you have coming in. So thank you for being here, and thank you, Leslie.
Betsy, thank you so much. And we're very excited to have Betsy as our CEO going forward. So, all right, I think we'll, if it's okay, we'll start, Danielle. All right, well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming on a Monday morning to do this webinar. And I'm gonna, oh, and look what I did. I just got rid of what I was sharing. There we go. All right. Well, this is advocacy in your backyard. And today, on Monday, April 28th, we're doing the annual town meetings webinar. So here we go. What we're going to do, I just wanted to let you all know is that we're going to go through 15 towns today. So what we're going to do after each town is I'm going to ask people if they have questions on that town. And if you do, we'll take them there. That way, if you have to drop off for some reason, you don't have to wait until the end to ask your questions. So, wanted to let you know the process of our decision making is, a lot of you know, we have a public policy guide. And that's a catalog of issues that we, that we put together to let you know what we have decided. Our policies are for certain issues, like wastewater and housing and stretch code and things. And it's the Public Policy Committee that's designed to advise and recommend the course of action. Once the Public Policy Committee puts together a policy, then we send it to the Board of Directors for them to accept it. And here are the issues that we're watching: short-term rentals, funding for housing, zoning reform, and wastewater. And here are the towns that we're not covering today: Falmouth, Provincetown, Edgartown, Oak Bluffs, West Tisbury. Those all occurred earlier in the month. Falmouth and Provincetown occurred on April 7th. Edgartown, Oak Bluffs, and West Tisbury occurred on April 8th. If anyone's interested in what went on with those towns, I'm happy to talk to you about it. We'd also sent memos out to members to let them know what was happening in advance of those town meetings. Aquina is actually going to be occurring their town meetings on May 20th, I believe. And I was searching for their warrant, but I was not able to find it. For those of you who are on the Vineyard, we'll be sending you out the Aquina memo with all the articles of interest to CCI AOR later on. And then Barnstable, we never cover because Barnstable is a town council, so they don't have town meeting. All right. And then, we start Chilmark. Chilmark is tonight at 7 o'clock at the Community Center. And here are, they have Community Preservation Act appropriation requests. So this is something that they do annually. And here we go, that right now, they're going to ask their town to vote on $45,000 for community housing. They're going to do $50,000 for the Chilmark Housing Committee Rental Assistance Program. And it's to convert seasonal rental properties in Chilmark to year-round affordable rentals, which is helpful during the housing crisis. $261,000 to assist with building affordable school employee housing in West Tisbury. This is a regional project. All the other towns that have had their town meetings, Edgartown, West Tisbury, and Oak Bluffs, they have also, they've also contributed money to the school employee housing in West Tisbury. So a lot of, and I find in the Vineyard, what they do is they have regional projects, and each of the six towns contribute a certain portion to help the whole island. Another one, another regional project is $50,000 that Chilmark's going to ask to for a building of a veteran supportive housing in Oak Bluffs. And then finally, there's $25,000 for Phase 2 of mixed use of housing and park and recreation for the Island Autism Group. And that building and project will be in West Tisbury. So those are the Community Preservation Appropriation Requests. And then they have another one, is just a regular appropriation. They're going to ask for, it's a very specific number here, as you can see, $7,851 for the town's share of the cost to fund the homelessness initiative, which is a Dukes County Regional Services Program. Dukes County is the county for the island of Martha's Vineyard. And as you can see, the towns all do an appropriation to help with the homelessness initiative that the county, the county, the county takes and manages. Now, with Chilmark, they're also doing something. They're adopting the Specialized Energy Code. They're asking the town to enact a general bylaw. There's three energy codes. You've got the base energy code, you've got the stretch energy code, and the specialized energy code. And this is the most stringent energy code. And they're going to ask the town to adopt that. And the reason behind is to provide more energy efficiency and to lower greenhouse gas emissions. So this would apply to all building of new construction and substantial renovation projects. And it would start in January 1st, 2026. We do not support Article 20 because we feel that the Specialized Energy Code is very cost, very, there's a lot of cost involved with it. It's going to make housing more, more, it's going to make housing more, it's going to make housing more expensive. And what's happened is, is that a lot of times with the, these codes, is that you find is that you're getting these wonderful energy standards that trying to get everyone off of fossil fuels. But unfortunately, what happens is, the grids that are on the Cape and the grids that are on Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket can't handle all the energy that, the electricity that's going to be needed to run these homes. So the reason why we do not support this has to do with the fact that we're asking people to have a stricter energy code, but yet, right now, the grids can't support it. So, once they have the grids more, once they modernize the grids, then we'll be more apt to do it. Plus, we'd like to see some things that are making that building more affordable. So, and finally, for two other things for Chilmark, Seasonal Community Designation. For many of you, you may know that the Seasonal Communities Designation was part of the 2024 Affordable Homes Act. What happened there is that there were, the islands, it was Nantucket, it was a lot of Outer Cape towns had been filing home rule petitions, asking for certain things. And Senator Seer had been seeing these home rule petitions for market rate housing trust, for year-round deed restrictions, for a lot of different things. And what they decided to do was create the Seasonal Communities Designation, that is a lot like a Gateway Cities Community Designation, where it's going to offer housing initiatives for Chilmark here, but for all the seasonal towns. And you're able to develop year-round housing for essential municipal employees without running a file of the Fair Housing Act, which is wonderful. And you can do it without a home rule petition. You're able to create year-round housing trusts. Towns can create their own housing trusts, but they also can have a bunch of towns do it and have it be a regional effort. You can also purchase year-round deed restrictions. Many people say, well, you can already purchase year-round deed restrictions. But this is for towns being able to do it in perpetuity. You can also adopt zoning bylaws that support smaller, more affordable housing options. For instance, they're going to have, if you get this designation, you need to create bylaws for tiny homes, and also how to use undersized lots for housing. Accepting this designation also opens the door to dedicated state resources and assistance tailored to the need of the town. And there's a typo there. It should say Chilmark, but it says Provincetown. Provincetown's already accepted it. Chilmark, we hope tonight, will accept it. And there was a meeting with Secretary Augustus from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities with a group of us on the Cape. And what he said is, this is something that is different than what the state usually does. The state usually tells you, this is what you need to do. When they're promulgating the regulations, they want us to send them information, meaning the towns. So they're sending, we're sending the home rule petitions that we have. And they're going to take that information, and they're going to really make bylaws and regulations that make it easy for us to comply, easy for the towns to comply. So with that, these are very important designations to accept. One other thing is that if you accept this, you do get more dedicated state revenue. And when you're going for a grant, what Secretary Augustus said, you go to the head of the line. So that's something to consider. And then, Article 23, this is Chilmark's unique way of creating rental housing. They said, "For rental housing on town-owned land, or by a nonprofit agency, land trust or other nonprofit legal entity dedicated to affordable housing, Chilmark's going to allow a limited exemption to zoning requirements if the following conditions are met." So this is how you're going to be able to do rental housing on Chilmark. Rental units may only be rented to qualified tenants by town affordability standards. Tenant selection shall be made by the Chilmark Housing Committee in accordance with the Select Board. No more than two rental units on a property per acre. Units are deeded as affordable in perpetuity. No more than three rental units for a single-family or multifamily structures. And all requirements of the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission shall apply. So Chilmark is allowing rental housing, and they're allowing affordable rental housing, but they very much have a, they're going to have a strict standard on what to do and how to go about doing it. Chilmark also has a ban on fractional homeownership. This is the use of any dwelling in the town as a fractional ownership interval or timeshare unit is prohibited in all agricultural residential districts in Chilmark. Now, that's something that other towns have banned in previous years. And it's, this is where the exemptions are, though. The section shall not apply to non-commercial groups such as families, partnerships, associations, or trusts with divided interests or agreements in which the real estate is held and transferred within the family, partnership, association, or trust. What they're trying to stop is shares that are sold in fractional or divided interests on the open market. So that's what they're trying to oppose, and that ban. But we don't think that they should, because housing is a, you know, we put property rights first, and we believe that people who have their houses should be able to use them as they see fit. One other thing, this is ADU bylaw. Many of you may know about this. This is ADU by rights. I've talked to many of you about this, and you've been to different sessions and events where we've talked about it. This is Chilmark, basically amending their zoning bylaws to comply with the Affordable Homes Act. So that was signed into law on August 6, 2024. This is going to allow ADUs by right in single-family residential districts. So it's basically what they're doing is, is they're saying, we're taking our bylaw, we've got what the state regulations are, we're going to sync it and make sure that we're in compliance. All right. Are there any questions with Chilmark?
Good update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see anything in the chat, Leslie, so I think we're good.
Thank you. All right. Now we're into Wellfleet. Wellfleet's happening tonight, and it's at 6 o'clock at the Wellfleet Elementary School. Article 13, the first one up, it's going to be a 2/3 vote required. It's an Enhanced Septic System Upgrade Program. As many of you may know, Wellfleet has been working on their sewer district, but they're also put together some regulations to comply with nitrogen-sensitive areas. And a large portion of their town will need to go into these innovative alternative systems. And those cost a lot of money. They're, the systems themselves, I think, around $46,000 to $50,000. That's not counting the landscaping. It's not counting the removal of the septic system. So it costs money. So what this article wants to do is, they're asking the town that they want to get $360,000 to assist residents with the installation of the Enhanced Innovative and Alternative Septic Systems within the Wellfleet Harbor Watershed. This is just the, where the harbor is, because 360,000 is a good amount of money, but it's not going to help everyone that needs to do it in town. So how they're going to try to do it is, they want to actually finance it through the State Revolving Fund program. By doing this, it'll allow principal forgiveness of the loan through the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And the principal forgiveness is anticipated to be up to 50%. So this is a unique thing that they're doing, and they're going to just try to help those who are having to put in the IA systems. Many of you who are working on the Outer Cape, or even mid-Cape, know that the problems that they're having with the fact that, once you are going to sell your house, no matter if your septic is, if your septic is passing, you still have to, it triggers an upgrade to Innovative Alternative Septic Systems. So hopefully, those people that are having to do that will get some help. The question is, how many will this help? And are they, if it's only going to help a certain portion, will they expand it later on? So it's a pilot program, but wanted to let you know, the town is at least trying to do something to help those that have to upgrade. Article 17 is their Community Preservation Act request. Actually, Articles 17 and 21. They're asking for $42,875 for Maurice's debt service. It's Maurice's campground. It's a campground that the town purchased. So this is a debt service on that loan, or I should say that bond. And then they want $48,625 for community housing. I love how specific the numbers are. They also have an appropriation request where it's $10,000 to contribute to the Community Development Partnership's Lower Cape Housing Institute. This is something that a lot of Outer Cape and Lower Cape towns give money to, Community Development Partnership. It's, this institute is for free, and it's for elected officials to learn how to create affordable housing in their towns. And here we go, Article 23, they've got the Community Preservation Act requests here. This is $50,000 toward building costs for eight one-bedroom affordable apartments for individuals with autism and autism-related disabilities. This is for a group called FORWARD, which is friends or relatives with autism and related disabilities. This is something that, if you all know the Omen family, they've, Kathy and John have spearheaded this. And this is going to be a regional project that is located in the town of Dennis. Provincetown gave money to it earlier. Falmouth gave money to it earlier, and Wellfleet is doing this now. They're going to make the request to do that. And then they also here in Article 24, have $34,500 to Homeless Prevention Council to assist Wellfleet residents who make up to 100% AMI with the payment of their bills. It says they may not qualify for other financial assistance. And this, again, we have a housing crisis, and things are getting very expensive. So this assistance will give them the opportunity to remain in their homes. Article 25 is $300,000 for community housing on Payne Hollow Road. This revenue is going to eight affordable homes at 80% AMI or less. This is going to help people that make about $75,000 or less to be able to have affordable homes. Five of the homes, and this is nice, five of the homes will reserve for people who currently live or work in Wellfleet and have kids in the Wellfleet Elementary School. Article 26, Community Preservation Act here, their request is $125,000 to hire consultants to write and manage requests for proposals processed to aid development of year-round housing. What they mean about that, it would be for affordable rents, helping them figure out homeownership, owner, homeownership and seasonal workers at Maurice's campground property. The reason why they're doing this article, and you'll see with this next article, is Wellfleet does not have a housing coordinator position. So this, right now, will help with the Maurice's campground project. And as you see, coming up in the next one, they're actually going to hire a housing coordinator, or they're going to ask their voters to help them get the money to do it. $250,000 to hire a housing coordinator for a period of at least two years. Wellfleet is the last town in Cape Cod without a housing coordinator. This position is needed to help with all the town's housing initiatives. So they're going forward with that. And so, now we're at Article 30. And this is a resolution that they have. And it's been, I've condensed it. It's to address Wellfleet's lack of sufficient year-round housing. They want the voters to have the Select Board direct 80% of the annual short-term rental taxes each year to the Wellfleet Affordable Housing Trust, beginning in fiscal year 2027. And here we go. Wellfleet, we've just gone over this. They're also going to be asking their voters to do a seasonal community designation. And hopefully, they'll do it. Again, we've gone through the, all the advantages that this is giving to people. And hopefully, Wellfleet voters tonight will vote to accept this designation. Any questions on Wellfleet? Okay.
I don't see anything in the chat.
Cool. Here we go. We're with Yarmouth. Yarmouth is on April 29th, at 6:00 PM, at the DY Intermediate School on Station Avenue. Article 12, it's wastewater infrastructure investment. This is a big one. They want to see if the town will, if town voters will help to appropriate $4.4 million for the rehabilitation of the equalization tank at the septic facility. Basically, their tank needs to be repaired. So these funds will be used to repair the failing tanks at the Yarmouth Septic Treatment Facility. And it's important because these tanks hold a raw seppage before it enters the treatment facility. So that's something where there, it's infrastructure that's very much needed, and they're doing the right thing by getting it fixed. It will be a 2/3 majority vote required. Article 14, there's PFAS problems in Yarmouth. I think that's the problems that have happened in, Hyannis have now found their way to Yarmouth, unfortunately. And what they're going to do here is ask town voters to appropriate $5,050,000 for the purpose of designing and construction of PFAS treatment system wells at wells number 10 and 11. What happened in 2021, well number 10 exceeded the newly maximum contaminant level for PFAS in drinking water, and it was shut down. So this proposed treatment system would return well 10 to service and will keep well 11 in service. It's a very smart move on their part. So that's what they're doing there with that article. Yarmouth also has more wastewater infrastructure investment. They want to see if the town will vote to transfer $2 million from the free cash account. So you're going to transfer to the free cash account. And then from that, they want to put $1 million into the capital stabilization fund, and $1 million in the wastewater stabilization fund. This funding is for the pre-funding program to facilitate the development of the town's first wastewater treatment system. Article 24, you've got Community Preservation Act appropriations. What they're doing is they're looking to do $620,056 to the Yarmouth Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, and then $40,000 to Hands of Hope for rental assistance and eviction prevention for Yarmouth residents. You can see, they're doing that in Yarmouth. They also had money of that in Provincetown and Falmouth, and towns are really seeing how they can help people stay in their homes. And any questions on Yarmouth? Okay. I'm going to take the silence. It's a good thing. All right, Truro. Truro is May 3rd, which is a Saturday at 10:00 AM at the Truro Central School. Here's their Community Preservation Appropriations in Articles 18 and 20. First one is, they're looking to do $500,000 for their Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The next one is, they're looking to appropriate $20,000 to the FORWARD program that we just mentioned. It's for the construction of eight new affordable and supportive one-bedroom apartments in the town of Dennis. It's, it's the program that we talked about earlier. They are going to go for a seasonal community designation. Again, this is something that we've already talked about for the other couple towns. But one thing about Truro is, Truro's having trouble with this. Just wanted to give you a little color commentary that they have a lot of part-time residents picketing and holding signs on the side of the road, saying no to the seasonal community designation. So the Select Board, I've spoken with them, and they are, they're gung-ho to try to get it passed. They have actually endorsed this 5-0, and so we're going to see what happens. But I think, out of all the towns, this may be the most talked about and dramatic vote that's taken on seasonal communities designation.
What's their argument against it?
Is that Peggy?
Yes.
Well, the argument against it is the same thing that they tried in Provincetown. They're like, oh, you don't want to do this because those, you know, regulations for tiny homes and under, you know, under smaller lots haven't been, you know, promulgated. So you know, you don't know what's going to happen. You don't want to sign a contract before you've read all the-
The trailer park thing.
Yeah, the trailer park thing. You'll end up with mobile homes. And it's all, that was something that, because of that happening in Provincetown and here and on the Outer Cape, that's when Secretary Augustus came down on April 7th, and he said, "We're not doing that. You know, we're going to talk to you about it. We're going to make sure that these are bylaws that," you know, basically with tiny homes, you have to have different, use different building materials than you do for a mobile home. And any kind of tiny home has to be year-round. So even if it was on wheels, and it was built for a home, it can't move. So it's really what it is, Peggy. It's, the second homeowners don't like the fact that part of this, it's community seasonal designation is, Select Boards, the ceiling for the residential tax exemption has been increased. So Select Boards can actually increase the residential tax exemption to 50%. And currently, it's at 35. So that's really what it comes down to. They don't want to have that because they, they're very angry about that. So I hope that's helpful. So, here we go. But hopefully, Truro will prevail. All right. This is a big deal in Truro. The Walsh property is a 70-acre property that the Walsh family donated, or sold at a good price to Truro for housing. And they want to put housing on it, they want to put open space on it, and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity here. So now, what they're doing is they're creating the Walsh Property Overlay District. And this district will create housing opportunities for seniors, for individuals and families. Within the overlay district, there are three sub-districts that are going to promote a diversity of housing stock and mixed-use development. Mixed-use, meaning you have businesses on the first floor, and you have housing on the top floor. The development located within the overlay district will have recreational opportunities also. Dwelling units within the overlay district are for year-round occupancy only. So here are the three districts to give you just the, kind of the headline on it. The Walsh Low Density Subdistrict will encourage compact development that is pedestrian scale, healthy, safe, and affordable. So that means they'll have housing, and then you'll also have open space and recreational spots there. Then they have a moderate-density sub-district, which creates affordable and attainable housing opportunities and homeownership opportunities through mixed-use development and/or multifamily housing. So you figure the low-density will probably be smaller units, the moderate-density, you're getting bigger units there. And then with, also, they're going to have a recreational district. And this is, this was something that really, the citizens made sure that the Walsh Property Committee knew that it was important to them. You want to have the space to protect and preserve the natural futures, the existing topography, wildlife, visual character, and open space for recreational uses. So it's pretty interesting stuff. I read through it, and they're very, very, you know, they've gone, taken great strides to really, you know, lay out to everybody what's going to happen in each of these districts. So hopefully, this will go forward. It'll be a great step forward to finally get housing there. Truro, they wanted, they have a home rule petition for a real estate transfer fee. They've done this before. They've done it, they've put it in, filed it for many years. What they're going to do for their transfer fee, they're asking for half percentage real estate transfer fee, which will be the liability of the purchaser of the property, which is different than what Provincetown asked for, which they put it on, no, actually, it's the same. There's a couple others that do it on the seller. So it's the liability of the purchaser of the property. There is no exempted amount on the sales prices. What I meant to say about Provincetown is, Provincetown has an exempted amount of $1 million. So anything over $1 million would be subject to the real estate transfer fee. There's no exempted amount here. And they're going to, they would put the revenue and split it between capital improvements and Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We oppose this for many reasons. One is the fact that the Community Preservation Act funds could be used more for housing. And until we look to exhaust all options that we could have under the Community Preservation Act, we don't think this is a good idea. And you're all, you all understand this very well, even better than I. Anything on Truro?
Quick question, Leslie. Two things. The Walsh property, do you access that off of the main highway? Or does that have to, do you access that off of one of the neighborhoods? Like-
The Walsh property is right on Route 6 and by the school that's there. So I think they're trying to figure out how to do that, whether to access it from Route 6, or whether to do it from, there's a, there's a road that goes down that brings you to the school. And they're doing a traffic study on that, Joelle, and to see how, what's the best way to make that happen. So they haven't decided it yet, but they are looking at it. That's a good question.
Real quick, also, the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The transfer times, if, oop. The transfer tax, if, oop. Sarah, do you want to go? You can go. Okay, the transfer tax, real quick. Um, if that does go through, is that a January 1st start? Is that a, as soon as it's approved start? Do they have any wording of that?
It's a home rule petition and I didn't want to put all the wording in. It's a home rule petition, so it has to go through, Hadley Luddy is going to have to first, um, introduce it. And then it's got to go through all the House and then it has to go through the Senate. Home rule petitions like this that have been refiled haven't done well. And they don't usually pass. So they, they did not put it, I did not have, let me see. I may have that. Hang on one second. I've got my notes with me. But they're basically-
So is there anything we can do to reach out to Hadley about this or is she opposed to it as well?
Let's first see if it passes. And the thing is, is that I think what we do is we'll actually, it would be the first of the year, but this is what we can do is I will monitor to see whether or not this passes and if it does, we can reach out to Hadley. Okay? And what I'd like to do then is I'll try to get a Zoom with her so that we can talk to her about why real estate transfer fees aren't a good idea. Would that work?
That's wonderful. Thank you.
No, thanks for bringing that up. Appreciate that. I mean, they haven't gone very far, so forgive me for not thinking that they are, but you know what? That's why you're here and asking that good question. So that's what we'll do if it passes. Uh, there was another person that had a question?
Yeah, it was just me Leslie. I sent you a chat. I was just curious. I didn't, wasn't aware of this, um, Walsh district. How many acres is it? It's a lot going on.
Yeah, there's a lot going on and I can actually send you the information because it's, it's of the article, it's pretty, um, expansive, but it's 70 acres.
Wow, okay.
They're not going to, they're not going to develop all 70 of it. That's why they have the three different districts. There's going to be, you know, right in between, you're going to have one district that's kind of on one end of the property, if you will. And then the low-density and then the higher-density, I believe is closer to where another side of it by the schools. And in-between is going to be a large district of open space, but Sarah, you, you put it in the chat and we'll get it and I'm happy to, you know, have a phone call with you after this and talk about it more if you'd like. Let me know. Okay. All right, um, any other questions on Truro? Okay, thanks for the good ones. That I, that spoke up. Uh, now we're in Nantucket. Now I just, you know, it's, there's a lot of articles here because that's what Nantucket does. There was 92 pages on their warrant. But it's interesting and I hope that you'll, you'll enjoy it. So anyway. Nantucket is amazing. A couple town meetings ago, they had a article that went through that there's a certain amount of money that they have to from their short-term rental revenue, which is about $10 million, that they have to give to the town. And so this is the general fund operating budget appropriation. That's what that action in prior is done. So this is $6,829,063 to be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year 2026 tax levy and other general revenues of the town, which would be short-term rental is what it is, to be transferred for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is an annual distribution. So it's a, it's wonderful that this amount of money is going for housing, but Nantucket, as you all know, is pretty expensive, so it's a, it's a good amount, but, um, hopefully it'll help there. And it's, it's actually a great thing. This actually was a citizen's petition that created article, um, the annual appropriation. So I thought it was a very thoughtful thing they did. Article 10, this is a general fund capital expenditure. This is something unique. They're asking to appropriate $2 million from the sale of the real, from the sale of real estate account, that's the name of the account, for costs associated with the acquisition of a parcel of land with buildings located at 9 Goldfinch Drive. It's going to be used as rental housing for the head of a town department. This is what happened. This was the airport director's private home. He approached the town to purchase it. Basically, the, the housing trust, the Affordable Housing Trust couldn't do it because of the cost of the house. So the select board passed a motion to approve this and town funds will be used. So basically they're going to appropriate $2 million to build, to buy this house. The money's coming from not short-term rental money, but from the sale of real estate account is which they have in Nantucket. And, um, they'll be able to purchase a house that can be used as rental housing for the head of a town department. It's rumored that the head of the town department they're doing is for their police chief who is, um, coming from off-island to, uh, lead the force. Article 11. This is town employee housing appropriation. They're requesting support of 14 million to be spent for the design and construction of town employee housing on Wyatt Drive. This is a two-thirds vote required. It, um, this article authorizes the treasurer to borrow the money and issue bonds for the appropriation. And but any borrowing authority shall be contingent on the passage of a Prop 2 debt exclusion vote. So this is two-thirds vote required and any, any of these appropriations then go to town, the town ballot. So when they go through their elections, they're also going to have to have another vote on this. But it's ambitious and it's great. Community Preservation Act appropriations, uh, they're looking to do $341,030 to the Nantucket Housing Authority to restore and preserve the affordable uh, duplex structure. The structure, when I was reading through it, it's in disrepair and this will actually help, um, preserve it and repair it and get it up to, to code and such. They're also going to, uh, ask for appropriation of $380,000 to the Nantucket Interfaith Council for housing and rental assistance to low and moderate income year-round working families. You see a theme going through the towns with this. Uh, $350,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust for the cost requiring land for affordable housing. So Nantucket's working on the housing because they really need it. For, I should say, for year-round residents. Community Preservation Act, $5 million to pay costs of acquiring land for the development of affordable housing. And then the cost of designing, constructing, reconstructing and equipping affordable housing in conjunction with the town's Affordable Housing Trust. And basically these bonds shall be general obligations of the town and will be paid from the Community Preservation Act revenue. You don't need two-thirds vote here. And the reason is, is that there's a 10 million reserve amount in the CPA account. So what they're doing is they're taking half of it and they're putting it toward housing to, um, basically lower the reserves. Here in Article 29. This is a citizen petition. It's to rescind the unused borrowing authority for the Affordable Housing Trust. Article 29 is basically they're trying to redo and take away the authority of the town to give that six, the, um, you saw this one? It's to take away this ability, Article 8 here. So basically they want to take away that authority. Why? We don't know. Uh, I didn't, wasn't able to see of anything like the explanation. They didn't have an explanation in the warrant. It's just to see what they could do. They would like to have this repealed. And unfortunately this would stop an annual appropriation of the general fund of the 6.5 million and more going to the Affordable Housing Trust. And we oppose that because we do feel that short-term rental money if coming in should go for housing or wastewater. This is something that has to do with the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. They're going to look, asking for a temporary moratorium on tertiary dwellings. And basically what it is, is because the size requirement of an ADU and tertiary dwellings are similar, the intent is to temporarily prohibit the creation of tertiary dwelling units so that additional zoning changes of need can be brought forward at a special town meeting. So it's just, it's pausing those dwellings because they're making space and room for the byright accessory dwelling unit um, bylaws that are coming in. Here it is in Article 43. They basically are asking the town to accept the protected ADU language in the Affordable Homes Act that'll align Nantucket's local zoning bylaw with the definitions of the Affordable Homes Act for clarity and consistency. Articles 44 through 49, I did not put them all in here because basically upon reading them is, it's a bunch of definitions that they're changing to make sure that they could provide clarity to Nantucket zoning bylaw to sync it with the language used in the Affordable Homes Act for the ADUs. The definitions that are covered is, it's a protected, create a protected use ADU, a definition. Principal dwelling unit, year-round housing. What they're saying for Nantucket, they're counting year-round housing as 10 months. Um, or 10 months or more. Which would be 10, in other words, you can't have, consider anything year-round housing if it's under 10 months there. That's a little more concise. They have definitions about off-street parking and attainable housing. So that's what Articles 44 through 49 are. Article 50 is cottage community. This is to create attainable ownership housing for those who earn at or below 240 AMI. And that's what the, uh, AMI ceiling that they have in Nantucket because of the price of housing there. For these cottage communities, you'll need a special permit to create one for year-round residents. It's allowed in residential and commercial zoning districts. The units are going to have year-round deed restrictions. And the lots shall not be subsequent to covenants, restrictions or similar encumbrances. I believe they have some cottage communities out in Nantucket where there are covenants. So this is going forward. They want to make sure that these don't have them. And all units must be single-family detached dwelling units. Okay, they're also, um, doing inclusionary housing here. So if you're a developer and you're supposed to have some attainable dwellings or affordable housing, you can provide a monetary contribution of equivalent value to the town of Nantucket. So instead of building it, you can give money to Nantucket to cover the cost of what you should have done. To be able to place in a fund for the development of attainable housing administered by the Nantucket Affordable Housing Fund. Now, the amount of such contribution shall be equivalent to the average sale price of a residential property with 5, 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet in lot sizes in the R5 district. I'm hoping that's the most expensive district, but I'm not sure where R5 was. I tried to look it up and I still need to do more research on it. So, um, we oppose this. Uh, Ryan has talked a lot about this, that we don't believe in inclusionary zoning. He doesn't think it's a good way to go about getting housing done. Uh, but this is what Nantucket has decided they're going to try to do. All right, here's the fun begin. Short-term rentals, gang. Got a bunch of these. Article 66. Citizen petition, short-term rentals zoning bylaws. Just so you know now, I don't know for many of you, um, Nantucket has been struggling for six years to do some kind of regulation surrounding short-term rentals. Every time that they brought a bunch of, the town has brought articles forward, they have failed. Citizens petitions come, they have failed. And since then, and many of you, many of you may know, there's been lawsuits. You've got neighbors suing neighbor. You've got a group called ACT NOW, which is, um, uh, funded by a billionaire and who lives on the island, who does not want short-term rentals and he's not in favor of them. So he's been spending a lot of money. He's backed a lot of the lawsuits. So the bottom line is, is that the town decided this year, I talked to a couple of select board members and they said, we're, we're done. We're not going to do anything more. You know, we're just going to let it, the zoning board of appeals handle it. And so now we've got citizens petitions. Now out of all these citizens petitions, 66, if it were to pass, we would support. And the reason being is this is an article that would make short-term rentals allowed in use in all residential districts. This would get rid of all the lawsuits that have occurred on the island between neighbors. And actually, if that would pass, it could help us in other places. We usually do not support short-term rental zoning bylaws, but as you look at it, as I read through it, the fact that they're going to make it an allowed use would take away a lot of the problems that we're having, uh, both on Nantucket and can, could be used to fight against what's going to happen in Falmouth coming up. Um, Article 67, citizens petition. This is, uh, allows short-term rentals in residential districts with conditions. So here we go. Owner lives in a principal dwelling unit 30 days per year. They have to do that. Then, any use, the short-term rental use is one day less than the time of the owner's occupancy. So if you're there 30 days a year, it doesn't have to be consecutive. You can rent out for 29. If you're there for 60, you can do 59. So that's, that's the math that they're using here. And they said, but July and August, which are the peak season, short-term rentals are seven days a week. That's the requirement in July and August. They want to have, have you do weekly rentals during the peak season. And it's a three-day minimum for the rest of the year. And you can only do one short-term rental per lot, no exceptions. So both of these need a two-third vote required because there are zoning bylaws. Um, and so we oppose Article 67. Now Article 68. We don't need a two-thirds vote because it's a general bylaw. Zoning bylaws need two-thirds majorities. Zone, general bylaws just need a simple majority. So this is something that looks a lot like 67. It's basically wants to amend the current general bylaw on short-term rentals that they have for registration permitting, inspection and fees. And they say that the operators are subject to the short-term rental, their inspection by the Board of Health upon reasonable notice via a consent or administrative warrant or without such notice in the event of an imminent threat to public health or safety. So that's that, those are, that's the big piece there. And then also they say July and August, minimum day of seven days and a three-day minimum for the rest of the year. So that is the citizen's petition for the, to amend the already, um, existing short-term rental general bylaw. Article 69. This is a citizen's petition again, and the goal is to create a local short-term rental database and measure impact on the economy. So they basically, uh, want to create, these, these people want to create a database. So what they want to do is to do that, they want to have a 36-month period, if you will, to create this. It'll begin January 1st and in that, they're going to cap the number of Nantucket short-term rental certificates to 1,350 per calendar year. So that's, so they're going to do that. It's a temporary cap. Then they, with that, you have to have the annual renewal of owners with the adestation of compliance with all laws. They want short-term rentals can only be rented for seven, 70 days per year. And no more than two certificates for short-term rentals. And you have to limit the remaining, the happening, in other words, if you have two short-term rental certificates, the 70-day restriction for rentals stays at 70 days. So basically what they're doing, they're disincentivizing people to have two, more than one short-term rental. Uh, that's a two-thirds vote and we oppose that. And so now we're going to seasonal community designation. Nantucket has it on their warrant. Hopefully they'll pass it. And they also have a real estate transfer fee here on a home rule petition. They, interestingly, also do not have an exempted amount. They want a half percentage on real estate transfer fee on any real estate property and the fee would be paid for by the seller, not by the purchaser. And the money would go into the Affordable Housing Trust. We oppose that. Any questions on Nantucket?
I don't have anything in the chat Leslie, but I'm just doing a time check. It's about 11 o'clock.
Okay. Yeah, sorry guys, I'm trying to move fast. Uh, Wastewater Enterprise Fund. Basically they would have a, they want to create this fund so that they can have a dedicated fund for all their wastewater uses. Town acquisition of property for wastewater infrastructure. This is what they're looking to do. They want to take some, um, town property. It's to help with the salt pond runoff issue. It's a two-thirds vote required. Got a seasonal community designation here. They've got a real estate transfer fee. Those, they've got a 3% and they have an exempted amount, any, it's a million dollars and over going to their Affordable Housing Trust Fund. They've got a special corridor district. Eastham's looking what to do for the tea time area. And basically they've done a lot of work here and had a lot of meetings where they basically, um, have created development patterns and a regulatory process for businesses and property owners. And to do, for redevelopment, but, and they want to make sure that it's a New England-style village. So that's what they're doing there. That's two-thirds vote required. They also have an accessory dwelling unit amendment here. So we'll see what happens there. Eastham has Community Preservation Act appropriations. It's a bunch of money here. There's 37, 379,000 for community housing. Uh, 760,000 for a building that they want to renovate for community housing. 10,000 is going to that, uh, Cape Housing Institute and $50,000 to the forward project in Dennis. Brewster, any questions on Eastham? Okay, Brewster. Community Preservation Act appropriation, $147,000 for a housing coordinator position. And that's going to assist with the Affordable Housing Program. Capital and special projects expenditure, they've got $100,000 from the Water Quality Stabilization Fund. These funds are going to be used to finish their comprehensive update to the town's integrated water resource management. These funds are going to be used to finish their comprehensive update to the town's integrated water resource management plan. And this is the Heroes Act. Basically, there is a veterans exemption, and the Hero Act allowed it to be increased, and this is for veterans and their spouses who live in housing. They can have a property tax extension. Basically, what's happening is there's two local options. The first one is the town has to say, yes, we will allow an increase in your exemption based on the Consumer Price Index. And they can also tax, increase the tax exemption up to a hundred percent for people, so you can do both of those. There's ninety Brewster residents that are currently eligible, eligible for this event. If, if the event, the event, eligible for this benefit, excuse me, for my misspeaking. And right now, the exemptions range from four hundred to fifteen hundred a year. So it's nice for that. They're creating a water quality district. And basically what it is, it's an overlay district and regulating provisions that apply within that said district. They're trying to protect the quality and quantity of their drinking water for future needs. Basically, this district would also, it lays out how to protect groundwater and surface water resources from viral pathogenic phosphorus and nitrogen contamination. And basically, they want to regulate hazardous and toxic materials used in order to protect ground and water surface resources. The article itself has a long listing of all the different toxic and hazardous materials. They don't want you dumping and using there. And just to go into it, there's two zones. Zone one is going to be immediate land around their public water supply well. Zone two, two is going to be a DEP-approved area of the aquifer, which contributes to groundwater, to a public water supply. Zone two is larger, so zone two includes zone one. And then they go through all the generation, the prohibited uses. Any generation of storage of hazardous and toxic materials, including petroleum products, are not allowed. Housing, you've got to get a special permit for housing in this area. And it's, if you have ten or more dwelling units, except if it's, you're building for municipal use, or you're building a single-family home, you're fine with there. Basically, also, you have to have a special permit for buildings or buildings having five thousand square feet or greater gross floor area. Again, municipal use and single-family homes are exempted from that. It's a two-thirds vote. They have a short-term rental task force. They're asking for voters to say, there's a report that has been done. We want to accept the report. And then the task force is going to report out again at a fall town meeting in November. This is, in Brewster, they've got a citizens petition to create a comprehensive wastewater management plan. Basically, they're asking for three hundred thousand dollars, and the reason why they're doing this petition is they said that Brewster's done a great job protecting its water resources. However, the town has stopped short of a comprehensive planning, meaning a comprehensive wastewater management plan. And they want it developed, and they're going to go to town meeting to try to convince voters to agree with them. Anything for Brewster?
I don't have Brewster, but I have an Eastham question that came in after the fact.
Sure. What do we have, what do we have for Eastham?
What is Eastham doing for septic?
So Eastham's doing for septic. That's, I'll be happy to talk offline about that. I mean, if you, they're basically, it's not a big thing that they're doing right now for this town meeting, but that's not to say that they're not doing something for septic. Can you, can you get the name of the person, let them know?
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, I'll contact them. So, sorry, I did not want to not respond, but I just, I will be happy to do that offline and talk with you about it. Harwich. They have the Great Sands Wastewater Sewer Construction Borrowing Authorization. They're asking for thirty-five million dollars. And this is for the Great Sands Lake area. They want to, they're going to build wastewater treatment there for Buck's Pond, John Joseph Pond, Kitty's Pond and Sam Lake, Sand Lake. It's going to, the sewer is going to restore the water quality of the ponds. And they, by authorizing this, they're able to go to the short-term, they're able to go to the state revolving fund, and they're able to get zero percentage of it. So that's a great thing. Two-thirds vote are going to be needed at town meeting, and then they're going to have to also do a vote at town, on the town election on the ballot, because it's a prop two-and-a-half debt exclusion override. Citizens petitions. This is something that, we oppose it. Basically what it is, it's the same thing as article twenty, which you just saw. The citizens wanted to make sure that there was money for the Great Sands Lake sewer extension. It's redundant, and the finance committee said, we're not going to support this because we're already handled it in the prior article. So we'll just gloss, go over that. They're doing a lot for housing in Harwich. They're doing two hundred and seventy thousand for community housing, ten thousand grants for the Lower Cape Housing Institute, five hundred thousand to their Affordable Housing Trust, a hundred and twenty thousand for the Forward Project in Dennis for autism, people with autism and autism-related disabilities. They're doing one point five million from their Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for affordable housing to the Harwich Housing Trust Fund. So they're doing a lot, all the towns are doing a lot, and so is Harwich. Basically, what they're looking here is, they are requesting a hundred and fifty thousand to obtain engineering services. And basically, they're trying to comply with the state regulations here regarding meeting nitrogen reduction limits on town watersheds. So they're going to study it, and then they want to figure out what it is that they need to do to address it and solve it. Affordable housing property tax exemption. They want to adopt a new law to allow the town to enter into Affordable Housing Property Tax Exemption Program. This is separate from the veterans ones that you've heard about. Bottom line is, is that if residential owners rent their units to income-qualified people at affordable rates, they are eligible to a thousand to fifteen hundred of a property tax exemption. In Harwich, it's a pilot program. They want thirty thousand dollars for it, and they're looking to cap the exemption at thirty exemptions per fiscal year. They, this is a Hero Act. This is a veterans property tax exemptions. What you've seen, it's those two local options. And they want to adopt it here in Harwich. And let's see. This is the, one thing that they've added here in Harwich is also property exemptions for National Guard members and reservists. So if you're a National Guard member and you're reservist, and you go, and you're fighting, and you're helping protect the country either on, within the country, or in, across the ocean, in a foreign land, you're able to get a property tax exemption for the time that you do it. It's a wonderful thing. Your eligibility criteria will be established by the Board of Assessors. And basically, they think it's going to cost about ten thousand dollars to have this exemption. They're looking to do the accessory dwelling units also, to amend their bylaws to get in, to comply with the Affordable Homes Act. Wastewater funding, they want seven hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of implementing the town comprehensive water resource management plan.
That's, uh, sandwich.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's sandwich. Trying to go fast because of time. I apologize. Anything for Harwich? Okay, now, sandwich. May fifth at seven o'clock at the Sandwich Middle High School. They're looking to appropriate seven hundred and fifty thousand for town's comprehensive water resources management plan. So basically, they want the money to help with the planning and implementation. They've got the Hero Act here, so we've talked about it before. They're looking to do this, and it's a great thing, helping the veterans. They also, accessory dwelling units, they're looking to comply with the Affordable Homes Act. What's interesting here is that, there, one thing that they're also doing that's in the Affordable Homes Act is that they're adopting language regarding adjacent lots under common ownership. So these lots will no longer be treated as a single lot for local zoning purposes. So basically, you have two starter home lots. They've been merged together under common ownership. But a house is built on one part of it. There's another lot that's available. You're basically able to unmerge that, and you're able to build a single-family residential structure that will not exceed one thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet of heated living area and shall not contain less than three bedrooms. The bottom line, this is allowing land that could be used for starter homes to be available, used for it. So that's the unmerged lot section of the Affordable Homes Act. They've got a general bylaw for short-term rentals. They're going to, they have to be registered and inspected annually. They have to, the rental certificates have to be promptly displayed. There's parking on site, minimum one space, one bedroom. It's, you can't rent for less than two consecutive nights. You have to have, sure that you're in compliance with all codes and carbon monoxide and heat detectors. And they're prohibited in affordable housing units, ADUs, or any units with outstanding state or town code violations. Basically, what they're doing is this is just to make sure that everybody gets registered. So there's no restrictions really here, other than compliance of codes and things. So that's sandwich. Any questions with sandwich? Okay. We're at Mashpee, same night, May fifth, seven PM, Mashpee High School. May fifth is going to be a night where there's a lot of town meetings going on. They have three hundred and fifty thousand here that they want a CPA appropriation for the Mashpee Wake, Wakeby Boat Ramp Stormwater Remediation Project. Basically, they have to assist in the remediation of the pond to address the impaired water quality concerns. So basically, they want to capture runoff here and treat it. So this is what the town would be given, would be putting in. You've also got association for, to protect Cape Cod that's looking to put in about eight hundred thousand grants. And the State Division of Fishing Game has committed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's a joint effort to try to clean up the water there. They have the Cluster Wastewater Treatment Facility. They want a borrowing authorization of two point five million to pay for the planning and design of wastewater collection here. And basically, this is the next step approved by the Sewer Commission. And basically, it's going to be a prop two-and-a-half debt exclusion. So two-thirds vote at town meeting, and then you have, it's going to the ballot. Their wastewater management. They want a borrowing authorization of two hundred thousand for the planning and design of wastewater collection treatment and affluent recharge initiatives. It's got a two-thirds vote, and they have to go to the ballot for it. They have aluminum sulfate sulfate treatment. They want to actually get an authorization of about two hundred and fifty thousand to pay for the design of aluminum sulfate treatment, which basically removes phosphorus from water. They want to do that at the Wakeby, Mashpee Wakeby Pond. So that's going not only two-thirds for the town, but going to the ballot. It's a great idea to start getting rid of phosphorus. They have a septic loan annual reauthorization. Basically, the town of Mashpee uses the Aqua Fund to help to pay for things. And basically, in order for the town to reload funds to future additional septic projects, the town, this is an annual reauthorization. My guess, it'll pass pretty easily. Accessory dwelling unit bylaw, the bylaw here it is, it's the same thing in compliance with the Affordable Homes Act. Wastewater appropriation, they're borrowing about one point eight million to replace and upgrade necessary components for their low-pressure system. So basically, they've got to do some work on the system they already have. So two-thirds vote and going to town election ballot. Uh, anything on Mashpee? Okay, Bourne is May fifth at seven o'clock. They've got some Community Preservation Act appropriations, eighty-nine thousand for their Affordable Housing Trust, two hundred and twenty-five thousand for rehabilitation of housing units for the Bourne Housing Authority, so it's maintenance. And then they want two hundred and nine thousand in, for community housing reserves. There's three articles there. They're also doing the Hero Act here, veterans property tax exemption. A home rule petition, this is different. They're, they're asking to limit the use of nitrogen fertilizer. Basically, they want to establish limitations on the use of nitrogen fertilizer. So the goal of this article is to reduce nitrogen in marine water bodies. Anything on Bourne? Well, now we're at Dennis, and we're on May sixth. So we have wastewater enterprise appropriation, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And they're looking for a hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars for community housing. Hero Act, they're, want to adopt it in Dennis. They also want to adopt the ADU zoning bylaw requirement to comply with the Affordable Homes Act. They are also doing the lot merger bylaw. It's again, common ownership of two starter lots. They can now unmerge, and you can also build family, single-family homes on it. They have to be small, one thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet and not exceed three bedrooms. Any questions on Dennis? We're coming into the home stretch, two, two to go. Orleans. Here's their article. They're going to be on May twelfth at six PM at the Nossett Middle School. And they have a sewer enterprise budget. Basically, they're looking, it's four million, four million six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars is what they want for the town sewer operation. The good news is, they don't have to borrow. It's coming from their wastewater special purpose stabilization fund, their sewer enterprise revenues, and a small portion from general fund money. Community Preservation Act appropriations, ten thousand to the Lower Cape Housing Institute, four hundred thousand to the Affordable Housing Trust, and five, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars to community housing. This is something where two-thirds vote. It's sewer construction in the lakes and ponds area. They're looking for a bonding authorization of forty million, five hundred thousand to fund the construction of the lakes and ponds collection system and pumping station project. It's got to be, you've got to have a vote at the town ballot. And if it goes through, and if they get the authorizations, they qualify for a zero percent loan from the state revolving fund. This is the engineering services. This is interesting. They're looking for a bonding authorization of six hundred thousand dollars to basically ask for AECOM engineering services to engage, respond, and directly collaborate with phase-two property owners to facilitate individual property connections. The DPW here is, is trying to, there, it looks like they're overwhelmed. I think it's a great idea. I'm going to try to get Province Town to do it. But basically, they're going to let their engineers talk directly to homeowners to make it more efficient for the connections. Again, two-thirds vote required, and it's a prop two exemption. Article twenty-five, fund water quality testing. Basically, they want a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred to basically look at the water quality in Bowden Pond. So put together a plan. Mill Pond Nitrogen Management Evaluation. Again, Mill Pond, they're also looking to, for a hundred and twenty thousand to fund the management evaluation. They basically have degraded habitat there, and they want to make sure what they can do in the short term to improve water quality. Article twenty-eight, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Basically, what they want to do is they want to raise, they, they got it at a hundred percent right now. They want to raise it to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. It would only be for non-community preservation article sources, meaning funding. So if you're still getting CPA funds into that trust, that can only be used for a hundred percent AMI. They're doing the Hero Act here. Again, veterans exemption for housing. They're also looking to do the community, seasonal community designation. They've got a citizens petition. Basically, what's happened there is that there's citizens that want the town to look at having a residential tax exemption. And the bottom line is, the citizen who wants it wants to have enough money to budget the overtime and software for it so that they can make it happen. Anything for Orleans? We're at our final town, ladies and gentlemen. May tenth at one PM, Chatham. Here's their wastewater project expansion. They're borrowing thirty-two million to pay for the cost of design, renovation, and construction of various projects involving wastewater collection. It basically also includes two million to fund the first phase of grinder pump purchases. The town of Chatham is looking to purchase grinder pumps to help to fray the cost of using grinder pumps by the residents. So that's interesting, and it's a good idea. The borrowing is contingent on an override, so it's two-thirds vote required, and then you have to go to the town ballot. They basically have here, it's a transfer of one million, seventy thousand dollars for system repairs to their original sewer, for a pump station at Stage Harbor, and the replacement of the denitrification filters air system. So it's building and maintaining. They want to also establish a sewer assistance program. They want to transfer fifty thousand dollars to fund a assistance program to provide financial assistance in cases of sewer connection hardship. Twenty, articles twenty-eight, twenty-nine. They have Community Preservation Act appropriations, one hundred and forty thousand for community housing and five hundred thousand for their Affordable Housing Trust Fund. hundred and forty thousand for community housing and five hundred thousand for their Affordable Housing Trust Fund. They've got stormwater management that they're doing here, it's a general bylaw amendment. Um, basically, what they're trying to do is that they've got runoff, and that's causing, the runoff, besides other things, is causing impairment. This is where they're going to try to deal with the stormwater. Basically, there's, um, they want to regulate illicit connections and discharges to the municipal storm drain system. And they also want to, and it lists prohibited substances and activities to improve stormwater management. What this is also doing is got a list of things that you should not be throwing down the storm sewer drains. For instance, dog poop is one of the things, and actually, in Province Town, that's been a problem, because when people do that, our beaches can no longer be, we have to close down our beaches for a couple days because of the fecal matter. So they're doing a good job, is, there's other things that just, it's basically what they're trying to say to people is, don't throw things down the storm sewer that you wouldn't usually do, it's not a waste basket. It's for your, for water to drain. And let's see. They've got a neighborhood district center, you've seen, um, a lot of towns are doing this now, this is basically, they're encouraging more efficient land use, and they're going to have parking regulations there, they're encouraging a range of housing opportunities. They are going to allow affordable housing here, eighty percent AMI or less, and attainable housing between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty-five AMI. Basically, these houses will be your deed restrictions, there's going to be inclusionary zoning applied to all the buildings in this area. And they're trying to create, um, multimodal pedestrian friendly design and development. It's two-thirds votes are required, and it's basically creating a district. A lot of towns have been doing this, and this seems to be the trend. And they have a home rule petition to establish a new housing trust. And basically, um, they want to, this trust will be known as the Chatham Housing Trust. The purpose of the trust is to provide for the creation and preservation of both affordable and attainable year-round housing. This home rule petition will not be needed if they accept, if the town accepts their seasonal communities designation, just so you know. But they're kind of making sure it's an insurance policy. Here, they want to use CPA funds for affordable and attainable housing up to two hundred percent AMI. And basically, they're looking to increase the limits because right now for housing CPA funds can only be used up to a hundred percent AMI. And they are establishing, asking for a real estate transfer fee here, it'd be, uh, half a percentage point. And, but the exemption here is for houses two million dollars and over, it's going to be paid by the purchaser of the property. And again, goes to housing, uh, funds for housing purposes, and we oppose that. Seasonal communities designation, we all know what that is now, and, um, Chatham is also asking for it. One last thing, and this is the last thing that we're going to talk about today, is their home rule petition where they're going to, in, they're adding, Chatham wants to add commercial fishermen to the affordable and attainable housing preference under seasonal communities section. You know, when we go back here, it says here that you can, uh, develop housing for essential municipal employees. Well, they're looking with Article fifty to expand that definition to include commercial fishermen. So that's really what this is, and, um, so that's it. Thank you all for staying around. Thank you so much, I know it was long, and if you have any further questions, let me know. And, um, just, I really appreciate all your patience with all this information that we had. And are there any questions before we sign off?
Thank you, Leslie, that was great.
I put a pile of them in your, in your inbox, and you can get to me another time.
Please do that, please just send me questions, and I'm sorry, I tripped over a few things when I was talking. Uh, sometimes my mind works faster than my mouth does, but I appreciate for your patience. I'm here to answer any questions for any of you, and I really appreciate you all participating because, um, you make the difference on the ground, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for pulling all that together, it's a lot.
It's my pleasure. You all have a wonderful day, and thank you again, I'll sign off now.
Thank you. Have a good day.